Good morning. This is a regular meeting in the Cameron County Commissioners Court. It is the 12th day of September 2013. We do all meetings. We will start with a moment of silence and as you reflect on, as you reflect on today and your families, please keep in mind and prayers for Mrs. Tina Ortega Bennett, who passed away earlier this week. Mrs. Bennett was the first mayor of Los Indios. She was the, she resigned not too long ago because of her health. She passed away this, I believe, on Monday. So just keep her and her family, the Ortega family and the Bennett family in your prayers. We will be led by the Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. and the Texas flag by Judge Cordova at the appropriate time. Please rise.
(inaudible) One with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the jury public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. It's all like fair and balanced. Pretty cool. Public comment? On consent, any item under consent any member of the court wish to take out and discuss separately?
Good morning. Please table 2B. B is a boy.
2B to be tabled?
Judge, could we pull 2T for discussion?
Item 2T to discuss. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to approve consent with the exception of item B to be tabled?
So moved.
And item T to discuss separately. Moved by Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Sanchez. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries. Item T, consideration authorization to advertise for RFPs for a concession restaurant and beverage Marina Seafood Restaurant Location Number 10 on South Padre Island.
Yes, Judge, Commissioners. The reason I pulled this was because I just want to get, I guess, direction from the court. On the RFP title, we have at least restaurant and beverage Marina Seafood Location 10 on South Padre Island. Mike feels that this may be a, the way it's worded, it may give the perception that we are circumventing the bid process. So I just want to get authorization or direction from y'all whether we should use that language or should we just leave it general and say lease of property to see what we get. Maybe a restaurant or maybe something else.
Well, if we're being told by our purchasing manager that he's got some concerns with it, why would we want to leave it that way and not change it? I mean, he is the ultimate responsibility guy for it. So why don't we do that?
We do that?
Yeah. What language would, where's Mike? Is Mike here? Mike, what language would you believe appropriate? And can we just change it here without having to place it back on the agenda? Is it just a, what is it? Going from what to what?
Yeah, we spoke with Delvia Javier.
Speak on the microphone, please.
If you'd like it open-ended and you'd be flexible to have the facility used for whatever comes forward as far as RFPs, we could just basically say that we have the facility for lease.
Well, it's, you know, it's your call. I mean, I think that you're bringing it to our attention that there's something, you know, may not be kosher with it. So what is it that you'd like for us to do with it?
Well, the way it's worded here, you know, we're just-
It limits it only to a restaurant.
Exactly.
And you're saying if we want to use it for something other than a restaurant or consider something other than a restaurant, now would be the time to do it.
Exactly.
You're not saying that this is a bad idea. You're just saying if there's other business opportunities that we want to consider, we need to do it before we put out the RFP.
And back to your question, I think if we just say that we have Location 10 available for lease without saying exactly what, you know, it should be.
Well, unless, unless that is what we're looking for, unless we're looking specifically for a restaurant slash bar and grill or whatever it is. I mean, that's, that's different. So really, what is the intent of the court?
Judge, I think that's why they really brought it up was just to get the direction from the court. Do you want to limit it to a restaurant-type facility or did you want to open it up?
Javier, where exactly is this?
This is Dirty Al's site.
So it's already set up for a restaurant?
So we should just leave it as a restaurant?
Yeah, it's a restaurant.
I mean, is there anything illegal about not changing it?
No, that's the intent of the court is to receive proposals for firms interested in setting a restaurant at that site. I think that's perfectly okay.
They're one of our best renters, I think. So why would we want to change it? Don't fix something that's not broken.
Leave it like that.
Move to approve as is.
Okay, move by Commissioner Sanchez, seconded by Commissioner Gatz. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Budget amendments, line item transfers, end or salary schedules.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. You have the line item transfers. You have some for indigent defense. We are, we have expended all the funds in the indigent defense for the court-appointed attorneys. So we are moving some funds with this line item transfer. This will probably leave about $8,000 available. So we're going to be looking to where we can present another budget amendment to move more money in there. It's anticipated that we'll have considerable amount of claims coming in in September prior to year-end. So we will be coming back to the court with another budget amendment for that.
Martha, what happens to claims that are done in September but aren't presented to October? Are they, do you pay them out of the next year's budget?
We pay them if they're, if they're for the prior year, we will pay them in the FY13 because we, that's why we keep accounts payable open until mid-November.
Okay.
Do you have the funds once you make the transfer? Let me ask you another question. Are you going to encumber enough funds to be able to pay all these things that are coming in? And if you do, then where is that going to come from?
I know that in the CPS cases, we do have some money in there that we will be able to, we'll come back to the court with a budget amendment for, I don't know what the change has been, but there are available monies in the CPS budget for the court-appointed attorneys. So we will be coming back for the court. We do anticipate that we will have enough funds in there to, to pay off the claims. The next one that you have is for the infirmary, environmental health, the health department, wig department, planning and inspection, the DA's Department of Treasury funds and vehicle maintenance. Then you have budget amendments for the health grants which begin in September. You have the Volca grant and the VAWA grant for the DA's office. You have the divert court program, the health grants continuation, and you have the salary schedules as well for the health grants. And you should have some also for the, for the VAWA grants as well, the DA's and the divert court in there as well. For your approval.
Do you recommend?
Yes, I did want to, now that we're talking about the budget amendments and line item transfers, the, the health, the health benefits fund, right now it has a fund balance of 700,000 approximately. We are processing and we're presenting an ACH claim today for 362,000 of which we anticipate we will probably get about 200,000 back due to a stop loss. So that would leave us approximately with about, once we get the 200,000 back, that would leave us, you know, with about 600,000 in there. We do have more, we do have two more payroll deposits that will be made for the month of September and those run about 350,000 apiece. And it's going to depend on the amount of health claims that we receive in the month of September as to what that ending fund balance will be. So just as a consideration for the court, what we can do is we can sweep all funds that are available in the health benefits line items by departments, whether or not they have been used. We can transfer those, since they're already budgeted, we can transfer those to the health benefits fund and maybe that will bring up the available funds in there for year-end purposes. So we'll bring it back to the court. We'll bring it back to the court next week once we get, once we find out how much is still available in there.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded by Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Gatz. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Claims?
Claims warrants number 307474 through 307860, number 307891 through 380, 308041. Payroll for 1,615,038.91. An additional payroll for 532.63. The ACH health benefit claim for 362,522.30. I'd like to void number 307761 for 250.50. That was a payment that is being presented today, but the wrong vendor name is there. So I'm requesting that voided. I recommend. So moved.
Any questions? Moved by Commissioner Benavides.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gatz. Have to approve claims. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. On the minutes, August 15th, 21st, 27th, regular, special and special meetings. Those ready to be approved?
I move to table.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Gatz. Have to table the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item D, consideration authorization to a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2013, 24, 2014 budget. Do I hear a motion to open a public hearing?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Gatz. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. We are in a public hearing. Anybody wish to make a comment on the budget? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Gatz. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Public hearing is now closed. Item E, consideration approval of toll rate schedule of fees for the Cameron County International Bridge System.
Judge and Commissioners, your packet, you should have a copy of the toll schedule that staff is recommending. The only change in that schedule is on the very top, the classification number one, automobiles, pickups and motorcycles changing from $3 to $3.25.
Pete, where does that put us in terms of the other crossings from here to Starr or Hidalgo County?
We'll be matching Donna at 3.25. Everybody else pretty much at $3. Prodesto might be a little bit lower, 2.75. But pretty much from here to El Paso, it's, it's $3.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
That's approved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Gatz. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item F, consideration approval for a merit increase salary adjustment of $5,000 to our infirmary administrator?
Is it in your budget?
No, it isn't, sir. I did outline how I would, how we could make it happen. If not, I'm willing to take it out of my salary.
Is there any, Martha, is there any, any dollars, you know, out there that we could look at? You know, I mean, he is overseeing all of the federal inmates, all of the, you know, it's a pretty significant increase in what's going on in that area.
Yes, there is a significant increase and we do anticipate funding being available. I did speak to Mike Leonard and they are willing to pay for this out of the commissary fund, which they can.
And there's enough there?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Sanchez, seconded by Commissioner Benavides. Discussion, just a quick question, Mike, hold on. As you did this merit pay increase, did you follow an evaluation of the employee or who did, let me ask you, who did the evaluation to determine that it was a merit pay increase?
Between Dr. Omaida and myself.
So there was a formal evaluation made and assessment?
There's not a document. It's, it was verbally that we needed to do that.
Okay. I would, I would recommend that, that as you do, because you do evaluate other employees, right?
Not, not as determined or specified in the, in the policy manual.
Okay. You may want to consider implementing that because you are the largest department. You know, we just came up with the salary matrix for you and make that as part of your policies. Just, this is something in the file to be able to justify any type of merit or increases like that.
We were talking with Mr. Flores about that, Arnold Flores, and I think we can develop, you know, one that's, that's used across the board.
Well, just to follow county policy as best we can.
And my motion was that it get paid from the commissary funds. That's why I made the motion.
Thank you, sir.
It's not.
Not out of your pocket.
Okay.
All right.
Well, it's, it's important.
Yeah, no, I mean, because we've approved the budget, but if there's money there and it can be used for that, then we should, I mean, because Dean does a lot more and I know he's very underpaid for what he does.
Right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item D, on consideration action regarding the recommendation of the grievance committee, if y'all may have read, the grievance committee on an eight-to-one vote denied all the requests. Do I, do I hear a motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Gatz. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item H, consideration and action setting the tax rate for the fiscal year 2013, 2014 and point zero, I'm sorry, 0.384291 for every $1 valuation according to the attached order for tax rate. Is there anything for you to say or just, do we just adopt it?
Unless you have some discussion. I did pass out this paper on the bottom. It says the way, exactly how the motion needs to be made to adopt the tax rate.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.384291, which is effectively a 2.14% increase in the tax rate.
Well, is it a two, is not a 2.14% increase in the tax rate?
Over the effective rate.
Over the effective rate?
Right.
Okay.
But that's the way it has to be worded by statute.
All right. Out of motion, a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Item I, consideration adoption of the budgets for the Cameron County General Fund, Special Road and Bridge Fund, Law Library Fund, the Employee Benefits Fund, Debt Service Funds, the International Toll Bridge System Funds, the Colonia Street Light Fund, the Park System Funds, the Airport Funds, the DA Drug Forfeiture Fund, Sheriff Drug Forfeiture Fund, Sheriff Child Support Fund, District Attorney Pretrial Divergent Fund and County Bail Bond Fund for the 2013, 2014 fiscal year budget. Ready to go, Javier?
Yes.
Your email only had the cover sheet that I got. No, no, nothing behind it.
No meat.
And I, I received it. It did have all the pages, but I couldn't print it. I'm glad it's here.
Yeah, it's kind of struggling. It was the same email that went out to everybody. So I apologize for that, but it is there in front of you.
Blame Odyssey.
Blame Odyssey, okay.
Everybody else does.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions or you want, you want to go over some specifics?
At least an overview.
This, this document is the fund and department totals, the actual individual department line items. I have the, the document that's, the numbers already, or the pages already numbered. I just need to include the supplementary information in the front. And then there's a cover page that needs to go that's now required by statute that tells how everyone voted on the budget. I'll have that for you by Monday on CD and then it'll be posted on the county webpage.
Got it. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I mean, it's, it's, let's see. What was it that was pending?
Oh, the only thing that's pending is we had set aside just over $19,000 is what was left under contingencies, reserving that in case something happened with the grievance committee. Since there was no action or the requests were denied, those funds are still within the general administration budget under contingencies.
Okay. What was it, like 45,000 or 60,000?
It was 19,000. But what we talked about at the last meeting was, and I think we had, we drew a consensus was that if, if there were no claims by the grievance, by the folks that grieved, that we would use that money towards the hiring of an additional auditor for the auditor's office. And that's what we agreed to do at that meeting and just as a consensus.
But we needed to find the difference.
But don't you need like 50,000 to hire another auditor?
Well, Martha, go ahead.
Actually, the court had already funded and it's in the budget for one and a half auditor.
Right.
And to fund the other half, to bring the half to a full-time, we would need an additional $29,294. So if you will allocate the $19,629 that was fun, that we had set aside for the grievances, then we would be short $9,600. And I would urge the court to designate the grievance money that had previously been allocated and we will look for the $9,600. I think we can find it and that will hopefully bring us back to, to an additional full-time.
Yeah, and if you cannot find it for an additional reason, then you can defer
Yes.
the hiring till you have that money available.
Correct.
For some, you can't find the $9,600.
Well, but then we're going to need to fund it next year. We're, once you hire someone.
Yes.
Let me ask you this. How are we on travel?
Travel right now has available about $2,800 in the actual travel line item. However, in the mileage reimbursement, we still have available budget of 17,000 and change.
So we're going to have enough to get through the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know that we were
Yes.
running out of money and I said, well,
Correct.
maybe we should put that 19,000 in the travel budget for next year so we don't run out at the end of the year.
We've been, we've been doing pretty good.
But we're all right?
Because last year, last year we wound up with about $5,000 altogether anyway. So we do have available budget.
I had the opportunity to visit with a couple of the district judges and they were pretty adamant about another, another auditor. Yeah, they, they wanted to make sure that we adequately audited and they're concerned and wanted, expressed a concern to me that they would be very much interested if we could do what I told them. I says, we already funded half. I don't know how the grievance thing's going to go, but, and as a result, as well, you know, will you consider this because we really would like one more, you know, like auditor, you know, not a staff assistant auditor, but just a person that could, you know, do the work. You know, I think you have, what, two right now?
We have one and a half right now that we're funded. So this will give us the two.
In your office.
Oh, in turn, in field auditors?
Yeah.
We actually only have one internal auditor and what we do is we pull from, from the grants oversight that we have.
Well, we had talked about this, I think, last year that we needed to at least get you three more.
We've talked about it for a number of years and in order to be able to perform all of the field audits that we do need, I need additional staff so that we can have dedicated staff.
Well, you're still short.
Yes, that that is what they will do is concentrate in field audit.
Yeah, but it'd be less short.
Yes.
I don't have a problem at all with that. I do have a problem that, that when other people come to apply or to ask or request for positions, that there's never any money. And, and that's fine if y'all want to allocate this money to, to your getting the personnel that you need. But I want the same effort made for other requests that also come, you know, and not just say, well, there's no money, there's no money. Because here we're willing to go out and search for more money to accommodate your, your extra clerk. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Well, and, and we also have to consider that for next year's budget, we're already adding 12,000 or what's, what are we short for another auditor? So we're already adding $10,000 to next year's budget and we're still barely doing this one. So we need to keep that in mind, too.
Was, did, did the Board of Judges pass a budget already?
Yes, they, they approved the budget already. They, we had a Board of Judges meeting this past Tuesday. They approved setting the compensation of the court reporters and the county auditor staff. And in, in, in an effort to keep in line with what Commissioners Court has directed, they allotted the same amount of increases that Commissioners Court has given to all county employees.
For everyone else?
For everyone, yes.
Did they do the numbers? I mean, like, did they approve what, one and a half or did they approve two?
They approved two.
They approved two.
They approved two.
So their budget includes two?
Yes, with a hope that-
They approved two what?
They approved two. They certified two additional new auditors contingent upon the Commissioners Court approving it.
Oh, you already have the people you're going to hire?
No, they're vacant slots.
They can't approve slots?
They certified the, the budget.
The budget.
And they certified the amount. They certified the amount, they certified the budget and they certified the need for two additional assistant auditors. There will be another meeting where they will approve the actual hiring of those two people.
Yeah, because the statute's real clear that they have to appoint individuals.
That is correct. We did discuss that.
Well, but, you know, what they did this past Wednesday is not unusual. They've done it before and subject to us funding it. But just let me make a point that even though this is adding to the budget, this particular item is no different than any other additions that we had to the budget. It's going to have an impact next year. Everything from the raises to the, to the adjustments to the, to all the judiciary, you know, I don't want to just cherry pick, well, this one's going to add another person to the audit, I mean, to the, to the budget next year of 19,000 or 20,000. You have to look at the budget as a whole. And so we did a lot of things this year that are going to impact the budget next year, not just this particular item. And I agree with Commissioner Benavides. I think that, you know, but, but you've asked for these, for these slots for a number of years in terms of, y'all with three, three, we're able to do that. I will tell you based on, on what I've seen, you're still going to be short two auditors. I mean, even though we're, we're doing a lot this time, but I think you're still going to be short in order to comply with everything that you're asked to comply with.
Well, my, my concern, though, is that if, right now, we don't have enough to hire a full-time auditor, right, Martha?
Correct.
So in order to hire the full-time auditor, we would have to wait till maybe January so that there's enough money in there for a full-time auditor for the year. But next year, we're already going to be that amount behind unless we're only going to hire them for one year. But that's not the plan, right?
No.
So do we have any other slots in this year's budget that we're hiring people halfway through the year that we're then going to take on the following year?
Not that you're hiring halfway through the year. You have a number of positions that were approved new for this year that will be full-time for the FY15 budget.
Well, the five deputies that we just hired.
But that money's already in the budget.
Correct.
For this person that you're going to hire, you're going to have to wait to hire them once there's enough funds to carry them through the end of the fiscal year.
That's correct.
But next year, we're, we're going to have to start at an additional 10,000 that we're not having in this year's budget in order to keep that person full-time.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think if $10,000 our biggest obstacle next year, I think we're in great shape.
No, but I just, I want to clarify, Judge.
Yeah.
You're saying that it's a lot of departments, but this is the only individual that we're going to have to already come up with money in next year's budget in order to keep them as an employee. Because we're going, if, if we don't have the money to fully fund it right now, that means to fix it this year, we just wait to hire them. But for next year, we have to pay them the whole year. So we're going to have to come up with that money right off the bat.
Well, I trust that, well, she'll find money within, within our existing resources to do that. But anyway, let's move on. What else we got? Commissioner Gatz?
Well, you know, there's $1,000 in, in Dean's salary because, you know, the commissary is going to pay for his request, right? So, you know, you look at some of those things. I would look at those types of things. I mean, I'm glad the sheriff decided that, or Mike, that that was, you know, an avenue that they could follow. But yet, if next year, they decide not to do it, you know, the guy's going to have his salary and we're going to have to come up with a difference.
Well, not necessarily because that's why I said the funding comes from, that my motion was for the funding to come from the infirmary. If they choose not to fund it, then he doesn't-
The commissary.
I mean, the commissary, I'm sorry.
It was a commissary.
So if they choose not to fund it, then he won't get paid that money.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
We think.
Do we need a motion then to adopt the budget as presented?
There's actually two that, one, just to vote to adopt it and then one to, there's no specific language, but it says one to ratify the property tax increase within the budget.
Okay, so you need two separate motions?
Correct.
Okay, let me hear a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Gatz.
That's, that's, I'm sorry, to adopt the budget, right?
Yes.
And that, that includes the two auditors, you know, all the discussion we had, right?
Yes.
That's correct. Now, do you want, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. You want another motion to adopt the, the property taxes?
No, it's just to ratify-
To ratify what?
The property tax increase within the budget.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to ratify the property tax increase within the budget? Budgets. Budget.
Budget.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, seconded by Commissioner Gatz.
I don't know what that does.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Thank you.
Is that a new motion?
Huh?
Is that a new thing or what?
Yes. There, there's a lot of stuff that's- There, there's a lot of stuff that's, that's changing, as far as transparency, and so there's additional steps.
Well, the transparency, the transparency that we're looking at is kind of like dubious, because we have to read in the previous motion on the tax rate
Right.
that we increased the tax rate by two point one four percent, which in reality, we didn't do
Correct.
because it's the same tax rate as last year.
Correct.
What increased was property values, not our tax rate.
Correct.
But the way that we have to read the motion statutorily, leads people to believe that we're increasing the tax rate, and that's not occurring.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, there's also a new cover page that has to go in the front of the budget.
Yeah, I know, that says
That says.
which kind of, you know, it's kind of like giving people the wrong perception of what's occurring, unfortunately.
So to the public out there, your tax bill should be the same, if not, come talk to Javier.
Unless your values went up.
Yeah, but if the value went up, you know, it's something else, that's an appraisal district issue, not our issue.
You could thank Mr. Villarreal at the appraisal district.
All right, item J, consideration and possible action to give authority to Darrell B. Hester Juvenile Justice Center Administration to demolish and rebuild the, the army facility on Kilgore Drive in San Benito?
I put this on the agenda, Judge, at the request of Mr. Ramirez, he asked us, and there's, there's a, I don't know if everybody got to see the packet, there's a packet that shows some pictures of where it's at, where it's located, this building was supposed to have been demolished like ten years ago, they have salvaged it, and tried to keep it open, but it has deteriorated to a point to where it is unsafe for those kids to be there anymore, and Mr. Ramirez is asking us for permission to demolish the building, and he's got the, the same kids that build the houses, will rebuild the facility that would be more suitable, the house, the wood shop classes that they have in there. So all he's asking from us is not for money, but just permission to demolish.
Move to approve.
Okay, move by Commissioner Sanchez, do I have a second, by Commissioner?
Second.
Gatsa, discussion, oh, a quick question, Tommy, not, not so much on this.
Is Tommy here?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Tommy?
I should have, I just, just wanted to clarify something, we're asking for the county to demolish it, and we will build a new.
Right.
Okay, we can.
Well, we can do it.
I guess, work with.
Public works, they've already visited, and they.
And I know this is not directly related to this, but on, remember, we had some, we were supposed to get a letter from the judge regarding security, one of the deputy constables or something, was that resolved?
No, no, as a matter of fact, I, I sent an email to Commissioner Gatsa about my concerns, because we did have an incident that could have gotten bad.
And it's not on the agenda, can we place that on the?
Well, it was too late for this agenda, so it'll be on the next.
Okay, can we just, so we can discuss that, okay? But it's related to this, because you're going to have to have security there as they demolish, so that's how I was bringing it in there, just to, okay, can you bring it in?
It's a far-fetched.
Move along.
No, you need security, man, right?
Thank you.
As you demolish, okay. All in favor, senior vice saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Carries. Item K, consideration and possible action setting the day of the week and the time of the regular meetings of the Cameron County Commissioners' Court, the place for the regular meetings, the courtroom on the second floor of the Cameron County Courthouse, the dance seat building, eleven hundred East Monroe Street, Brownsville, Texas, the county seat will not change.
Isn't this done in January, Judge?
I don't know.
That's what I thought.
Legal put it on. I didn't put it on.
We'd do this in January, we're supposed to do it at the beginning of the year.
I thought it was.
You put it on.
Well, I know, I saw my initials, but I didn't, but I think Bruce, that came from Bruce.
I thought it was at the beginning of the year.
Move to table.
Second.
Just, just ask Bruce if it needs to be.
I think the last time it rolled into January, because we changed it a couple of times.
I think it's before the, the, if I'm not mistaken,
Fiscal year.
I think it's before the fiscal year begins, not the calendar year.
I think it is the fiscal year.
Right. We can put, we have time to put it on the, the next time, but I think the last time we, it did not get on, and we did it in January or February.
Yeah, or I think we changed the, the times.
Okay, I'll just check back, we have time to bring it back. Do I motion to table?
So move.
By Commissioner.
Are we having a meeting next week?
Yes. Well, no, we're not having a meeting next week, we don't need to.
In two weeks.
We still have one more.
Yeah, move by Commissioner Gatsa.
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, to table for, until the next regular meeting, all in favor, senior vice saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Carries. Item L, consideration and authorization of approved minimum standards for fixed-based operators for the Port Isabel Cameron County Airport?
Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners, at this time, we're in the process of finalizing the RFP for the fixed, fixed base operator, operator services at the airport, it should be on your agenda next week for approval, and what we had done, we have established some guidelines for the fixed base operator, I submitted these guidelines to Texas, to the Texas Department of Transportation Aviation Division for the review and approval, and they were, they were fine with these guidelines, so prior for us to going out for an RFP for a fixed base operator, we would like to see, for y'all to approve these guidelines.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Sanchez, to approve, all in favor, senior vice. Discussion?
One comment, I just want to make the, the commission aware of what's going on, this has been an ongoing thing for a number of months, and Joe, and Raoul, and Mike Forbes, and Dilbia have been working on it for, for a good while, in trying to incorporate everything that needs to be there, but for the next board meeting, or the next commission meeting in two weeks, I'm going to put an item on the agenda, because we've had considerable interest, not in this, but in other opportunities that are coming, are looking at the airport, and I need to make the commission aware of what's going on. Unfortunately, there are items and requests that have, that are, you know, confidential in nature, because of the business activities that are involved, but in two weeks, we'll have them on the agenda, and I will update all of you on what's occurring out there, okay?
All right, thank you, any further discussion?
And also, there's one, one item that, that is not of a confidential nature there, the, we met with ICE, and they're looking at the possibility, because one of their largest facilities there, next door to the airport, is the processing center, they have numerous flights that they do out of Harlingen, Corpus, and
San Antonio.
San Antonio, right now, so we met with the field-based operations people from San Antonio, and interestingly enough, that morning, we had the meeting, is when they had a van rollover in Driscoll, when they were transporting people from Port Isabel to Corpus for a flight, and, you know, they're, they're very much interested in utilization of that area.
That'd be great.
We talked about utilities, which we need, you know, there's a whole lot of a cooperative spirit due to budget cutting at the Department of Defense, so we look to bring more things to the commission soon, okay?
Thank you, Commissioner, any further discussion?
Which will make it more attractive for FPOs.
All in favor, senior vice saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item M, consideration and possible approval of agreement with KNBH for taping and broadcasting to Commissioners' Court, are we ready to go?
Judge and Commissioners, we went out for RFPs, and we only had one person, one company submit a proposal, that was KNBH, he currently does it right now, they've submitted the same price that we're paying right now, and that's what the agreement.
Okay, go here. Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Sanchez, to approve, all in favor, senior vice saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, Adam Carries. Item N, consideration and approval to reclassify four slots from the Constable's Department Precinct Two by Commissioners' Court, and to be adopted by the Civil Service Commission? Who's going to present that?
No, Arnold.
For our Commissioners, I was going to ask that this.
Is this your item, you're the department head there?
No, but I'm.
I would, I would request whoever the department head is, or the constable, to present it to us.
Sure. Not that you're not eloquent, but
No, 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 but.
I think it's appropriate that the department head.[1555.13]